I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the Deputy City Clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sorel, here. Assistant Mayor Grasshopper, here. Counselor Farini?
Here.
Counselor Marsan?
Here.
Counselor Panalakis?
Here.
Counselor Hines?
Here.
Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Here.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer and then Counselor Whitehouse will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, not without our own.
Now we are down to a proclamation. It's Human Rights Day and I'm going to ask the Assistant Mayor to read it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas the city of Portsmouth is home to Seacoast Chapter 550 of Amnesty International and Saturday, December 10th is International Human Rights Day and the day the Nobel Peace Prize is awarded. And whereas Human Rights Day promotes, prompts us to remember with gratitude those who risked reputations and sometimes death as defenders of human rights. And whereas we also remember the contribution of such Nobel Peace Prize winners as President Theodore Roosevelt for the Portsmouth Peace Treaty, Dr. Martin Luther King, Amnesty International, and President Jimmy Carter. And whereas December 10th also is the anniversary of the 1948 United Nations Adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, thanks to the efforts of former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt. And whereas Amnesty International, a worldwide human rights organization with a large and dedicated membership in the United States, is currently waging a worldwide campaign to stop violence against women and children, as well as a campaign to ban torture worldwide. Now therefore, I, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, hereby proclaim Saturday, December 10th, as Human Rights Day 2005, in the city of Portsmouth and urge my fellow citizens to strive to follow the example set by these humanitarians and work together to ensure the preservation of human dignity throughout our nation and the world. Given with my hand and seal of the city of Portsmouth on this fifth day of December 2005, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I'm going to ask Dr. Simon Skitch, I hope I pronounced that right, to come up and accept the proclamation and then he'd like to say a few words. I always do a job on your name, I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd like to express the gratitude of our organization, Amnesty International and the Seacoast, to Mayor Sorel for her continuous support of this event every year. This is the third year you've proclaimed this day and reminded people of the importance of human rights. I think a nation such as ours that has always been a beacon for people coming to our country because of the fact that we guarantee civil and human rights, it has a great responsibility to make sure that we don't forget, that we can lose rights as well as gain them. And I believe that reminding people that there is such a day internationally that celebrates that is important. It's also important to remind ourselves that our nation has been on the forefront of getting international safeguards in place for human rights throughout the world, not just for our United States citizens. So I appreciate this recognition, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting, November 10th, 2005 to November 14th, 2005.
So moved, Your Honor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the public comments session. And we have nine speakers tonight and the first one is Ken Smith, 298 Mersle Avenue, no parking on Church Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. Here tonight speak on the closing off or no parking on Church Street from state over to court. Not here to speak if it's a good idea or a bad idea to take the parking spaces away. My concern about it, and I'm asking if you could table this issue, is the fact that discussion has not taken place between the owners of the buildings and so that they can also inform their residents and tenants of the businesses that will be affected by this. I was very surprised to see that there was not a notification program that was in place already with the city, that when parking spaces that are taken away from right next to where people are parking for their residences and their businesses, there is no formal notification to allow these people to know this was happening. I made some of them aware of it when I was here at a meeting a couple of weeks back, when it was on second reading, that was the first time I had heard of it. And I mentioned it to them and they didn't know about it. So I'm asking tonight if you could table it to allow that there's a meeting between the residences or at least the business owners and owners of the buildings to be able to discuss this very sensitive issue that's going to affect a lot of people, not only dumpster issues, but people who park there and need those spaces for safety reasons of other sorts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ken. The next speaker, Deborah Weeks, 86 Pleasant Street, no parking on Church Street.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening. I am one of the corner owners of The Green Monkey and I would ask that the third final reading of the no parking and the waste management issue with the dumpsters, please be tabled or not passed. We create a lot of trash. Our dumpster is a two-yard dumpster, it gets dumped four times a week. We have a lot of tenants that live upstairs, other business owners. If those dumpsters are taken away, we're going to have to put our trash out on the front on Pleasant Street where the metered parking is. We create a lot of trash that will fill that street every night. Right now, Waste Management does it four times a week for us, they'll have to do it every day. When the snow comes and they're doing the plowing, people that come in those metered parking, they walk onto the Pleasant Street, that will be all blocked. They have a hard time editing now with the snow removal. So I'm asking that you please do not pass this bill or at least table it so we can look at it again. Sometimes in the evening with our business, we leave very late, everybody uses the parking on that back side, which everybody knows that it's a public street, anybody can park there. We don't want to lose precious parking spaces that the city needs. People are very courteous back there, sometimes, you know, every once in a while you get something, but most of the time they're courteous. Late at night, I'll bring my car up, I have a back entrance, for safety reasons, I come out the door from the cars right there, I can get in and go home. So I'm asking, please table the no parking issue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Deborah. City Manager would like to say a few words.
Just want to make sure everybody understands, the issue before the council night, the third reading, is the no parking. It has nothing to do with dumpsters on the street because those need to be separately licensed by the city council, so those would have to be separately licensed by the city council.
Our next speaker is Keith Melonowski, 53 Cabot Street, no parking and rubbish on Court Street. Hi, Deborah.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Keith Melonowski, I own the building, 84 to 88 Pleasant Street. I spoke in front of this Traffic and Safety Committee twice. I met him down there once, I was in this room once. They said it was going illegal and that I would be notified. I haven't been notified and I was kind of like, whoa, when I heard it was the final reading. I said, I hadn't heard anything about it and now I'm trying to react, I'm kind of behind the game. We can't afford to lose those parking spaces. I mean, if you take those four or five parking spaces away, that means four or five more people are going to be parking on the street. When they redid Court Street, we lost a little parking. Now the fire people park in the first two slots, those used to be meters. We're losing more and more parking. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next one is George Bell, 92 Pleasant Street, no parking, Church Street.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of Deborah Phillips, who owns the Club Joint Barbershop and the parking lot that's on the corner of Court and Church Streets. And the problem we've been having there is people will park and they'll park beyond the corner of Mr. Melonowski's building and partially block the entrance to one of the parking spots for the parking lot for the Club Joint Barbershop. Several times I've called the police and they've come over and they say that they can't do anything about it because there's no signs there saying no parking. I believe that one time there was a sign there that said no parking here at the corner, that would make it the Court Street. And that's all, we're basically asking is that that sign be put back, maybe four to five feet back from the corner of Mr. Melonowski's building, that would give us free access into the parking lot and a good view of, when you leave the parking lot as it is now, you can't see if anything's coming down Church Street. It's a safety hazard. And that would leave plenty of room for one car to park there. And I've been two years now trying to get this resolved. I started with John Burke, I've talked to Counselor Hines, I've talked to Fred Gray, I've talked to City Attorney Sullivan, and it's time something gets done about it, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Our next one is Marty Cameron, 469 Ocean Road, City Parking.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, City Staff. I wanted to bring up just a couple of items on parking and one is a little bit on the financing at the Sheridan Hotel, just the contract on it. As I see it, it says the total bondish financing will come to $24,600,000. And at 240 months, that'll be $102,500 a month, divided by 30 days a month, that turns out to $3,416 a day. And I understand that we have 250 meters assigned to the city, so that would have come through, if the basis, what I have here says, that would be $13.60 a day that the meters would have to take in. Is that what is the number on the payments, like I read there, it said that there'll be a surplus of funds, but is the 250 meters, is that what everything is predicated on to raise that $24,600,000? The other item I wanted to mention on parking was the Worth Parking Lot. When the contract expires, I think it was the 11th of July, 2006, when that expires, everything in that contract should expire with it. In other words, the air rights and the present 20 lots that are assigned to the present owners. So I imagine they would negotiate something there to renew those 20 lots, but I think the air rights goes to the city. Because when the contract expires, the city owns the property and the rights. So I just wanted to bring those items up and, thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Our next speaker is Tom Nies, 419 Richards Avenue, regarding the bond issue.
Good evening, Mayor Sorel and Members of the Council, it's Tom Nies, sorry. I'd like to comment on the bond issue, but I'm not quite sure how to. I'm finding it's very difficult to understand what the finances are in this issue because the information only seems to be available in the newspaper. I'd like to urge the city council and the mayor to have the city manager place the documents that are available on the city webpage so that they can be found readily in advance, particularly before the December 19th meeting. I have to point out that some of the information that has been published, assuming it's accurate, and there's always the possibility that it's not, gives me some cause for concern about how these things are being developed. I believe the city manager at the last meeting said that they estimated that the revenues would be about $1,800 a year per space.
Excuse me, sir, I will be providing, and when I get to that item on the agenda, copies of handouts for everybody and I will give you, there are different pro formas that you can take with you and we had intended to put it on the website, but we, you know, the idea is that we're going to have that tonight and we're going to hand it out to everybody, so you'll have it. In addition, we will also be putting on the website and on December 19th, if the city council passes first reading tonight, there'll be a public hearing with another presentation with information and people will be able to ask questions at that time. I just wanted to let you know that's the process.
Thank you, I'd just like to make a few comments, finish my comments then and just point out that I think it's important that we understand the assumptions that can lead to the analysis and so far that hasn't been able to be done because the information's not available. I think that's important so we can understand as taxpayers whether this really is going to provide a benefit to the city or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter Bressiano, 101, O'Leary Place, election funding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Member and Staff. Just seeing that it's been brought up, just a few words on campaign financing. I have no problem, I support and I understand a lot of council members support a disclosure on campaign funding. What I don't like is if the council tries to put in a funding cap, campaign funding cap. There's too many ways of getting around that. Don't waste taxpayers' money and resources by trying to put a cap on funding because it's just, you know, I'm not a professional politician, but even I know how to get around caps on campaign funding, so please don't do it, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Malcolm McNeil, 180 Locust Street in Dover. Remember now, Malcolm, three minutes.
It'll be less than that, Madam Mayor. My name is Malcolm.
You always say that to a lawyer, you know.
I understand. You've already taken 20 seconds of my time.
Good evening.
My name is Malcolm McNeil, I represent Harbor Corp. with regard to the bonding resolution. We would respectfully request that you pass this for the public hearing on the 19th. We are in full accord with the city manager making all the information available to the public so that there can be a reasonable and comprehensive hearing on that date. We, of course, support the bonding resolution. We believe the information prepared by the city manager is comprehensive and compelling and it furthers, in our view, the Northern Care Study, the master plan and other considerations for the use of this site. So we look forward to the opportunity to have a full discussion on the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm.
How was that, Madam Mayor?
Very good for you. That ends the public comments session and now we're down to the approval of grants and donations. Okay, the first one is acceptance of a donation to the New Library Building Fund from Frank S. Wilson in memory of Marie Elizabeth Wilson for $100.
Your Honor, I move that the council approve and accept this donation to the New Library Building Fund.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The acceptance of Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant for $49,185.73. What's your wish?
Your Honor, I move that we approve and accept the grant and the donation to the Portsmouth Police Department.
Do I get a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Come on now, man, wake up.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Harold, then Bill, then Ned.
Your Honor, I think it's very important that we let the public know just what is going to be bought with this grant. So if you're allowing me to read the items, I would like to.
And the chief is here too, Harold.
I see.
If you want him to come up.
No, that's all right. Well, this grant allows the department to purchase 30 Motorola batteries, 10 quick-deploy barricades, 40 traffic cones, eight incentive command vests, seven air packs, 20 rows of barricading tape, two emergency fold and roll traffic signs, 10 chemically-treated over garments and 10 pairs of beauty gloves and 10 pairs of hazardous boots and seven mask voice amplifiers. I'd just like to ask one question in reference to the mask voice amplifiers, what are they like?
Chief? Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilors. Some of the equipment will allow officers to act and operate in a contaminated area and if they are wearing a full face shield and face mask, then they need amplification in order to talk to one another.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Hold on a minute, Chief, just in case. Bill?
Just want to check, matching grants in this? We don't, no matching grants in this. Okay, I just wanted to go on record. Thank you.
Ned, do you need the chief?
Yes, actually.
Sure.
Mayor, thank you. I read this in some detail with some interest, because as you know, I'm involved in Department of Homeland Security activities through my service in the Coast Guard Reserve, so I was interested in this. And I just, it was quite interesting to read through, but it was enigmatically named in terms of the buffer zone protection program, so that's kind of what led me into it. And I actually wanted to ask the chief to come up and just elaborate for us and for the public what, you know, in layman's terms, the overall grant was for. I noticed that it names Water Country in the grant application, which is a substantial tourist attraction in our city. So I wonder if the chief could just inform us as to what this particular grant was all about.
Yeah, sure. The grant is to allow us to be able to deal with a terrorist-type incident or weapons of mass destruction type incident where there was a large volume of people. It would allow us to go in and manage the incident, hence we have the tape for cornering off the area, the traffic cones for traffic, the signs in order to manage the traffic as well. And then equipment to outfit seven to 10 officers to be able to go into an actually contaminated area and manage the scene as best as they can. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
So if I could, in essence, this grant application was a result of you envisioning potential chemical or biological agent terrorist attack at a tourist attraction like a water theme park, which we have in Portsmouth, and what would it take you to respond to that? And then you applied for the funds to purchase the equipment to mount a response.
And the grant was pretty specific to that, to that type of, any area or a function and the kind of equipment that we could buy. So yes, we had to take a look at the community, assess the threats that are out there for the community and see what we could do with, you know, with our local resources for an immediate response and what type of equipment we would need to be able to do it. And hence, we put in for this grant through the state and through federal funds.
And you got it. Well, thank you for being vigilant about these funding opportunities and making sure you're equipped to handle anything that might come our way. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Are we all ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The acceptance of a donation to the Portsmouth Police Department from Walmart for National Night Out, a child safety seat program, $1,000. What your wish, Counselor Whitehouse?
Your Honor, I approve of the grant as submitted.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the considerations of resolutions and ordinances. First reading of resolution authorizing a bond issue, up to $15 million for the construction of the public parking facility.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
I move to pass first reading to authorize a bond resolution up to $15 million for public parking facility and schedule a public hearing and second reading on December 19th, city council meeting.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, if I might, I'd like to ask that Andrew Pergel and Nancy Carmer pass out information. I'd like to spend a few minutes just going over some information that I have put together with the staff regarding this issue and what I'll do is I'll wait a moment until Nancy's able to hand out the information and then I'll get into it so people can follow along. Let me get started by saying that as you have just seen under Section 8 of your agenda, there is a proposed bond resolution in the amount of $15 million to build a public parking facility in accordance with the joint development agreement with Harbor Corp. As you recall, at your November 14th meeting, the joint development agreement was approved by the city council. The proposed first reading of the bond resolution is the next step in the process to move forward on the public-private partnership with Steve Groswald and Harbor Corp. for the development of the Conference Center Hotel and Public Parking Facility. For your information and for the people in the audience, I have provided some handouts and I'll start with the bond resolution. The city council just, was the motion that was just made, the first item is the bond resolution, which is the legal resolution that would adopt this $15 million for the construction of the public parking facility. The next item that you have in your packet is an item that deals with the city's legal debt limit as of June 30th, 2005. The state statutes require the city retain a certain level of debt. It can go no more than 3% of base of the tax list. In the instance of general debt, which this bond issue would be, the city has the ability to bond up to $104 million in the state statutes. As you can see, we're at 21% of that maximum. We still have a 79% available. And to your right, you can see a bar graph that shows, in blue, our debt limit and then the darker color to the right is the amount that we have indebted. And if you look at the total debt applicable to debt limitation, we have $21.8 million. Moving to the next handout, you can see that if the city council approves this parking facility with the $15 million of debt, that we would be at 35% of our debt limit. The next item in your packet is something that was provided by Standard and Poor's at our last bond issue in July of 2005. As you can see from the Standard and Poor's review of the city, we have had an upgrade at that bond issue from a AA- to AA. I would draw your attention to a couple of the comments in the review by Standard and Poor's. On the second page, the second paragraph, they talk about the experience and capable management coupled with the long-term planning and financial policies has contributed to Portsmouth's strong financial performance and moderate, and I say moderate, debt burden. Debt and capital needs are planned through the city's six-year capital improvement, CIP, which is updated annually. And it goes on to talk about some of the specifics in the CIP. Also talks, if you look down to the fourth paragraph, finances, Portsmouth's financial position has improved consistently over the past five to seven years. The city has generated operating surpluses on a regular basis since 1997. And it goes on to talk about the city's financial position. The next item that I've provided the city council is a letter from the city's financial advisor from First Southwest Company, Peter Frazier, and I'd like to quote from his letter. He indicates that, "After reviewing the analysis provided and speaking with Representatives Moody's Investor Service and Standard and Poor's Rating Group, I believe the issuance of the proposed public parking facility bonds would not have a negative impact on the city's credit ratings. Both rating agencies indicated that the city's debt position would continue to be considered moderate and manageable after the addition of $15 million of general obligation long-term debt for public parking facility. The credit impact of the bonds would be neutral to slightly positive given that the parking fee revenue and tax revenue associated with the new conference center and related development is expected to exceed the debt service and operating costs for the facility. Following the issue of the bonds, the city will have used only 35% of its debt limit and will have approximately $68 million remaining borrowing capacity." And then it goes on to talk about the ratings that the city has had, we've had a number of rating increases over the past few years. The next item that I'd like to draw your attention to is probably one of three pro formas that I wanted to talk to you about. And pro forma A is one that I'll just walk you through and again, we'll have this available at the December 19th meeting as well. But certain assumptions that were made under the But certain assumptions that were made under the pro forma, and we had to make assumptions, the revenue assumptions dealt with, in this pro forma A, with the high Hanover activity for FY '05, the amount of revenues that were generated by the high Hanover parking garage in that fiscal year. Total revenues that were generated for fiscal year '05 from the high Hanover parking garage was $1,669,000, and less the actual leases for that parking garage was $492,000. I might add, there are approximately 550 leases on the high Hanover parking garage. 50% of them are daytime and about 50% are 24-hour passes. Total hourly parking revenue equated to about $1,176,000. The city does double-use the leased spaces whenever it can. Therefore, we have 915 spaces, and dividing that into the $1,176,000, there's a per-space annual revenue of $1,0286. Moving to the right and trying to put that in to interpret that for the conference center that we are proposing, the $15 million bond issue, we took the $1,286 multiplied it by the 657 spaces, for total revenues of $845,000. We then took the net lease payments that Harbor Corp. would make on this, which is $297,500, for a total revenue of $1,142,000. In addition to the revenues that you see here, there is also going to be 7,400 square feet of retail space at the facility. And we did utilize a $15 per square foot revenue base for 7,400 square feet, which equaled about $111,000. We have, that is a very conservative number. We have heard numbers from $25 to $35 per square foot, but we want to be extremely conservative in making those assumptions. Going to your left, you look at the assumptions we've made on the expenditure side. There are a total of 657 parking spaces. The total cost is estimated at $15 million. Because 325 of these spaces are going to be on a long-term lease to one company, there is federal tax implication, so 49% of the bond issue would be non-tax issue, which we used an estimate of about 6%. Moving over further to your left, there's 332 public spaces that remains. Therefore, we can use taxes and bonds, and we are basically estimating that at 4.5%. Now, looking down on column one, you can, if you go down to the total amount of revenue, you'll see that the total amount of revenue, taking into account the lease revenue from Harbor Corp., the hourly revenue that is anticipated, and the annual retail space revenue, is estimated in year one that we would have $1,253,000 in revenue with a bond payment of $1,228,000. Under this scenario, under this pro forma, we have chosen to do an even annual total bond payments over 20 years. If you look out to the year '05 and beyond to year '10, in accordance with the joint development agreement, the City Council has the ability to raise those rates by 5% a year, and those have been imputed into this pro forma. From year '10 on, there is, under the joint development agreement, the ability to raise the rates by 10%. If you go down to the bottom and all the way to the right, in the last figure, you'll see there is a positive cash to the city using these assumptions of $5,632,000. Again, this is a pro forma, and we'll go into more detail at the public hearing on the 19th. But I wanted to show you this based on actual revenue that is received in a parking garage in the city. This is the best information that we have relative to what would take place in the city. Moving to the next item, you'll see that I did a chart that would take the 332 public spaces that would not be leased to Harbor Corp. and multiply it by 24 hours in a day or 365 days a year. What you see is that we have 2.9 million hours available in any year. So what I did is worked with the staff to say, "Well, in the event that we had our spaces vacant, those 332 spaces vacant 60% of the time or filled 40% of the time," you can look down the chart, and you can see that that would generate $872,000 in revenue. And moving over to pro forma B, you can see that we did that assumption based on usage of those 332 spaces at only 40% of the time, which would mean those 332 spaces would be vacant 60% of the time. And as you can see, in year one, going all the way down to the bottom, using the same assumptions that we made in pro forma A, that there's a positive cash flow of $52,000. And going out all the way to the right and to the bottom, there's a positive of $6,181,000. Now, moving on to pro forma C, we said, "Well, let's assume that the 332 spaces are vacant 70% of the time." So what we did is we did the same calculations, and you'll see that the annual revenue estimated based on a 70% vacancy rate or usage of only 30% of the time would be $654,000. Now, going over to column one, coming down to the, you'll see under item number four, there is a new figure there. That figure is the amount of funds necessary from the parking fund, other parking resources such as other revenues that we receive on parking, which we would have to use in the first year of $165,000. Now, if you go out, you can see how that declines over into year 11, and then further out, it is now no longer necessary in years 12 forward. And if you go all the way to the right to the last figure, even using the figures of 30% usage and 70% vacancy, there's still a positive cash flow of $3,174,000. And finally, Your Honor, the other item that I have in this packet is a narrative summary that was provided to us by Robert Crawford, our, the city's consultant, hospitality consultant, HRI, which gives a review of the economic benefits, an independent review of the economic benefits of the proposed conference center and garage. And ultimately, talks about his independent review that the property taxes generated would be $750,000 in addition to what the Sheridan pays today. So, given that, I wanted to give you a brief overview on that information, and I think that the gentleman, Mr. Nice, indicated earlier that a suggestion on the, put this information up on the web page is a good idea. We certainly will do that, and that will go up as soon as we are able to put those numbers together on the website. I would then entertain any questions from the City Council relative to this matter. If this moves forward, certainly on the 19th, the public will also be able to comment.
I'd just like to check if everyone received the material out there. You're all sat? Okay, very good. Discussion? Counselor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Although I'm not in favor of this $15 million bonding, I will vote for this motion because I believe that the people need a public hearing on it. So I definitely would want to see something like this happen. I believe the public should be able to speak. And I would hope that anybody's got any questions or whatever, that they contact the City Council, City Manager, and come to this public hearing. I think it's a very important issue of the bonding of $15 million. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Harold?
Yes, Your Honor. I brought this up at a previous meeting, and I'm going to try once more. And what I'm looking at is the big picture, beyond the $15 million bond issue, beyond the garage, and what we can expect with the future development of the hotel conference center and the 21 condominiums and the addition to the hotel. I'm very concerned, and I bring this before the City Manager now because they definitely are people out there, and as the mayor says, my phone is ringing off the hook on this issue, and that is the taxing and the strain that this is going to put on a wastewater treatment plant on Pierce Island. I mean, we've got to address this issue right now, and I still like to see part of the $15 million bond issue, a item allocated to going to a secondary system for design and study of what we're going to have to face in the future. We're talking 1,000 people at this conference center, a 200-plus hotel expansion, and, you know, there's a lot of wastewater treatment going into this Court Street Pumping Station, not the Court Street, but the Deer Street Pumping Station, down to the Mechanic Street Pumping Station, and over to Pierce Island. So, the people are going to come forward, they're thinking like I am, that this is the time to bring it forward and create a trust, our fund, that will give us some seed money to do some design and engineering study, because it's eventually coming. We'd have to go, the EPA is going to demand us to go to a secondary treatment system on that wastewater treatment plant on Pierce Island. So I bring this up now, and I hope the people come forward at the public hearing.
John?
Your Honor, I don't disagree with what Counselor Whitehouse said, but I think the Counselor should recall that in your capital improvement plan, there is money that is set aside for the design and review of potential options for the Pierce Island plant. This $15 million general obligation bond is not the avenue that we'll be utilizing. As you are aware, and you voted on numerous occasions, there is what is known as the State Revolving Loan Fund. We go to the state, and actually, because of the wastewater treatment activities, we're able to get substantially lower interest rates that are subsidized, as well as 30% grant funding. We're in the process of working on that right now. The City Council has approved SRF budgets, and this would not be the appropriate time to talk about this because it is not the, this is a bond issue dealing with the garage. Certainly, if the City Council wants to set up a work session on where we're going with secondary treatment at Pierce Island, I think that would be important, and I totally agree with you. But there are two different funding sources. We're also going to be seeking certain grant funds. These are not general obligation bonds. Under our legal debt limit, we can provide more for sanitary sewer improvements. So, I agree with you, but I think it's a different discussion and a different public hearing.
One more comment, Your Honor. One more comment.
Okay.
I'm all through. Do you agree with me, Mr. City Manager, that the burden should be put on the developer from here on in, in reference to causing a problem at a wastewater treatment plant?
Well, I would phrase it a little differently. What I would say is that the City Council, and we are going to be going to the City Council in January, and this is something that the City Council is going to be dealing with. We are going to have a rate study that we're going to review with you, and impact fees certainly are something that is legitimate and should be paid for, but we're going to have to be consistent and treat all businesses the same. That would require the City Council to pass legislation that would then require all businesses that have certain impacts to pay those fees. And I don't disagree with you on that, but I think it's a totally different discussion. It's apples and oranges. We need to talk about the wastewater treatment facility at Pierce Island, and we need to talk about it in the context of secondary treatment, and also, we need to go and take a look at the history of why that is primary treatment today. That goes back to the mid-'80s, when the state had a number of facilities throughout this state that needed secondary treatment in low-flow areas. And what happened is, the city of Portsmouth was asked to go with primary treatment because there was not enough funding to go around to the other facilities. So we need to reignite that discussion with the state and federal government as to who's going to pay for the secondary facility. So that's, I think, a long and a very important discussion, and the funding sources for that are not general obligation bonds, but rather are sewer bonds and grants and low-interest loans. So, I agree with Counselor Whitehouse on what he has said, but I think it's a totally separate discussion.
Counselor Grasso, and then I'll be back over on this side again.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few weeks ago, there was a presentation here in the council chambers, which I attended, concerning the wastewater treatment. And it was explained very clearly that, at the present time, we are, Pierce Island can handle what we have now and what we will be having in the immediate future, and that we will be looking to have a second treatment plant, maybe not on Pierce Island, maybe on Pierce Island. But we need to do that as a separate identity, and I think that this bond issue should be looked at entirely as a bond issue for the parking garage and not throw in a red herring to try to detract people from the main idea here, which is to fund the parking garage. The wastewater management issue will be dealt with, and people that attended that presentation, I think, had a very clear explanation from the city staff that was there that night. Thank you.
John?
Your Honor, what I would, will suggest to the next city mayor and city council is that the first work session that we have probably deal with the secondary treatment issue, because it is an important issue, and it's going to be a very complicated issue in terms of not the amount of wastewater now that we can process under the primary treatment, because there's certainly enough capacity to do that. As we eliminate more combined sewer overflow, we're able to put more treatment through the facility. But I think the whole issue of the secondary treatment is one that needs immediate attention, not because of this project, but because of what we've heard over the last few months from the public. So, that's all I have to say on that, Your Honor.
Ned? Ned, did you have your hand up?
Not right now, Ms. Shaw.
Okay. Counselor Hines?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that we have to look at what is happening in Portsmouth as a big picture. What we are looking at is a major development in the city that is going to create a much larger tax base from which we will have the opportunity to draw what necessary money for the departments to function. And that larger tax base normally will produce a lower property tax rate because we have more money to draw from. And I think we have to look at that as part of this whole development, which, quite honestly, I see it as a self-supporting operation to a great degree. There is no major commitment by the taxpayers to this development. It is necessary, no question about that, because you cannot have the developments that are producing more business for the downtown business area and for job creation for everybody else in the city. There are many, many factors involved that you have to consider when you decide whether or not this whole movement is going to create a better life for the people who are here in Portsmouth and a reduced property tax rate in the long run.
Thank you, John. Down this end, do we have anybody? Yes, Counselor Marshon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to reiterate, it's been said a few times, but when you have points that are especially important, you want to make sure they get driven home. One is that, over the long term, like Counselor Hines just said, this will generate net positive revenue for the city. This will make money for the city in the long run. It, for a lot of reasons, including that one, makes it, I think, a wise investment in that piece of the discussion. The other piece is, and you've heard it tonight, there are other important parts that are related to this and other developments, but which are not directly linked to it. For example, we talked about the wastewater and secondary treatment. You've heard a lot of great discussion the last few months about it. One of many reasons why we need to have that discussion right now and why we're going to have a work session, it would appear, in January on that matter. It's a really important discussion, but it's important that we keep in mind that while they are related, they are not linked to the point where you have to do one and you have to do the other at the exact same time. There's a lot of good reasons for that. But we want to keep that in mind. We're going to have a discussion about it in January. The same kind of questions and answers would happen regarding what this means for parking ramifications down the line and other kinds of discussions. So I'm glad it's generating that kind of discussion, but we should not see these as barriers to moving forward on this project.
Thank you. Tom? You're all set? Laura, you all set?
Okay.
Yes, Ned?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because of my... Because of my deployment to Louisiana back in October, November, this is the very first council meeting on which I've had any opportunity to comment. However, I certainly was following the discussion of this project, as well as reviewing the documents that I was receiving while I was gone, and reviewing the accounts of the past meetings in the newspaper, and of course, reading my mail where I'd gotten a few letters from folks with opinions expressing concerns or other opinions with regard to this project. I think, I would just like to say that, with regard to one of the speakers earlier at the public comment session, as well as the, I guess, a current of some of the communications we've received, that I think the idea that this proposed conference center and parking garage is a project that is being sort of worked up in City Hall between the city manager, city staff, and a private developer, you know, with the acquiescence of the city council, and withholding information or not sharing all of the figures with the public, or using figures that somehow don't jibe, is an unfortunate, it's an unfortunate idea. It's an unfortunate notion. If indeed, folks feel that all of the figures, all of the detailed calculations haven't been shared as of yet with the public, then certainly, as the city manager said earlier, and as just happened earlier, hopefully, we'll put that to rest tonight. Having said that, and with all due respect to the city manager, I wouldn't blame anybody out there if, during his explanation of the figures, upon having received this spreadsheet as a handout tonight, if you had some difficulty following it. Because there are a whole lot of little tiny figures on these spreadsheets. And I got them in advance of the meeting several days and had an opportunity to go over them. And even during the explanation, I was having some trouble chasing, you know, chasing the figures and following them to the bottom line. But, from what I see so far, first of all, this project is an investment. That term's been used by several counselors up here. It's an investment in economic opportunity and economic development and the future vitality of our downtown and our city as a whole. And as our double-A bond rating shows, and the figures the city manager cited about the city's overall debt limit, it's an investment that the city of Portsmouth is in a very good position to make. We're in a very good position to make this investment. And secondly, the figures that the city manager went over tonight demonstrate that even under very conservative assumptions about the revenues to be generated by use of the parking spaces, as well as use of the retail space that will be built in this parking garage that the city will own, using very conservative estimates of the revenues, the city starts making money in year one, unless I am terribly mistaken, using those conservative assumptions. And anyone who thinks about the parking situation in our city, if you think that when we build a new parking garage, that the parking spaces are gonna be vacant, you know, more than, more than two-thirds of the time, you know, I don't know what you'd be thinking. There's certainly a pent-up demand for downtown parking. And with the development of a conference center project like this, it's gonna generate a lot more demand downtown. So, from my perspective, this is a pretty exciting project, an investment in the future vitality of the city as a whole. And I'm certainly supporting the reading that we're doing tonight and looking forward to the public hearing that we'll have in two weeks. Thanks.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question to the city manager, actually, two questions. Came out of a lot of the people that called me about this project. One of them being, if the bonding, when we, if we pass the money, it will take effect immediately?
No, what would happen is, if the city council passes a second reading at December 19th, what you would have done is given me authorization to issue debt. But that debt would not be issued unless the applicant goes through successfully the land use process. The, as I've said constantly throughout this process, this is, this process started back probably seven years ago. We talked about a conference center in the city. In January of 2004, we talked about, in a work session with the city council, about partnering with Harvard Corp. And at that time, the city council authorized the manager and the Economic Development Commission to move forward to further the discussions. In November of last year, the city council authorized the memorandum of understanding, which was the genesis for the joint development agreement. And in November of this year, we had the joint development agreement, which was approved by the city council. And this is just the next step. In the event, so on December 19th, if the city council votes to approve this, it will be authorized but unissued debt. And that's my understanding, then the applicant will have to go before the Historic District Commission, will have to go before the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustments. So, there is a long way to move forward, and the city staff will not be issuing any debt until they successfully get through those processes.
Out of that, the question came, if, while the project is being built and we are paying off the bond, where is this money coming from that will be paid?
The developer will be putting the money up front.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to pick up on the comments of my fellow counselors, Hines, Reynolds, and Steve Marshon. I think that the material that's been presented tonight has been comprehensive. There is no desire to be anything other than comprehensive on the part of the city or the city council, both in the terms of, you know, how we present it and what it is that you get to look at, and what we do for our deliberations. And so, given that these materials are provided at this time, and given that we have another meeting, if people have substantive financial economic analysis that is contrary to this information, I would love to hear it. It's important to us, if we're gonna deliberate, if there are serious concerns with the modeling, if there are serious concerns with the bonding plan, if there are serious concerns with the parking numbers, that's something, those kinds of substantive, specific concerns are what we need to make our decision. That being said, I support the project, given the information that I have in front of me, given what I have seen, given what's been presented, given what's been explained to me previously, and given what I've reviewed. And so, this is, again, all part of the process. It's been an extensive and comprehensive one. And we heartily welcome, heartily welcome, presentation of contrary evidence if it's out there and developed, because that's part of what we're supposed to do, is listen to that and deliberate appropriately. And that's why there are additional readings, an additional reading of this ordinance and a public hearing coming forward at the next meeting. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Tom. We are ready for the vote?
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Very good.
Assistant Mayor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshon?
Yes.
Counselor Pinalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes.
Unanimous. Very good.
Okay, now we're down to third and final reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period Three, Three, Zero, Slash, No Parking, Church Street, Both Sides, From State Street to Court Street. Madam Mayor? Yes, Counselor Pinalakis?
I'd like to table this issue till it can be looked into further.
Second. I'll second.
Because of the issue that was brought up by the property owner.
Do you wanna refer it back to counsel?
I don't know. I just, everybody's second on it. Should we refer it back, or should we look at it here?
Let me, can I speak just before you make that tabling? I think what needs to be understood by the people that have expressed interest in this issue, there are really two issues here. The one dealing with the parking, and I provided with some digital photographs of the parking and the dumpster issue, and you can see the conflicts there. But what we need to do, because then later in your agenda, you have a license agreement you're gonna be acting on, on a public street, which is the ferry landing. These dumpsters need to be licensed. It doesn't matter what happens with this ordinance. If it gets approved, or, you know, or tabled, or defeated. If parking continues out there, that's fine. But, we also have to license those dumpsters. They have to be insured, a number of things have to happen because, and I'll let the city attorney talk to this, those dumpsters are on city property, which is fine. I understand why, in an area such as this city, that you need to have those in certain places. But we need to license them.
Right. How long have them dumpsters been there?
They've been there a while, but Counselor, we have not had a full review of the street, and we have, and I'll let the city attorney, that we now have determined that's city property. Before, that was undetermined.
I understand that, but the reason I would like to have this tabled is that we are always talking, in every meeting we come to, is about parking spaces in downtown Portsmouth. And this is going to eliminate any parking on Church Street.
And I'm not, that's not what I'm speaking to, Counsel. Maybe I misspoke, but what I'm saying is, no matter if it's tabled tonight, my suggestion to the owners of those dumpsters is they get a letter to the city council asking for those to be licensed, so that we can properly insure them. We may wanna move them here or there, just to make sure there's safety that we deal with. There might be some screening issues. That's what I'm saying.
But my issue that I want to table for is specifically about the parking. It's between the city and the people that have the dumpsters, they know they have to be licensed, and they should do that. But I specifically want to see about losing those parking spaces.
Tom?
Madam Mayor, speaking to the motion, I understand that A is not B, and I see folks out there nodding, saying, on the one hand, we've got the licensing issue to deal with, and that's separate than the parking. I know it's the same in the sense that there's congestion in that area. But in terms of the motion that Counselor Pinalakis has offered, we're gonna vote on that. It's my intention to support her motion to table. And I would add, recently, we did the same thing. I think it was Pearl Street, but I'm not sure. Where it sometimes takes, with a limited area of space involving, you know, not a whole lot of people, a while for the first and second reading procedure to filter through. And then someone hears about it, and then they bring it forward. And so, we're used to doing this. It's appropriate to table. It's appropriate to have more discussion and interaction on the issue. And I would expect that would be what we'd do.
Counsel Assistant Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Counselor Pinalakis a question. You want this to be tabled to a specific time or forever? Your motion, I think, would indicate that, once it's tabled, it's. So, it's all right with me, John.
Can I propose an amendment?
I want it to see that these people get a fair shake on parking spaces, and the city takes care of the dumpsters or whatever. I come to these meetings every week, and that's all I hear, and all over the town of Portsmouth I hear, city of Portsmouth I hear, no parking, no parking. And we're gonna do away with three or four parking spaces on that street. And if I made my motion wrong, I will take it back and turn it over some other way. But I want to see that this looked at.
Tom?
I'd make a motion to add an amendment to Counselor Pinalakis's tabling motion, that the matter be referred to the Parking and Safety Committee.
Traffic and Safety.
Traffic and Safety, rather.
I'll second that amendment. I'll second the amendment.
Okay. For a report back?
For a report back, soon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the amendment, okay.
All opposed. This is for the amendment.
Right.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, assuming that motion now amended passes, this does not mean that we, it's not a linear thing. At the same time that this is going on, the issues dealing with permitting with the dumpsters can proceed with the letters going right here. And these two can be happening in a parallel track. So, that is correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Pinalakis?
Yeah, the other issue that I heard was that there was no sign up there that stopped the people from parking in front of somebody's parking lot there. There used to be a sign there, and there's no sign there now. This seems to be why this issue came to a head. And I'd like to have that looked at, too.
That's a traffic safety issue as well, to refer to.
Counselor Hines?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the real issue is, how do we control that part of the street, Church Street? We have dumpsters on them. They're on city property. They can get licensed if the city council or the city provides that licensing. To have safety on that street for traffic, you cannot have parking unless it is proven that it will not obstruct the traffic and will not create a safety issue. Those can be licensed if there are, in fact, existing spaces. So, I don't think anybody who is currently parking in a safe spot will lose his parking, providing he gets licensed and can prove that it is not going to obstruct the traffic and the safety of that street.
Counselor Pinalakis?
Counselor Hines, could you clarify that for me? We're talking, you say that they could park on that street if they were licensed to?
I say they cannot park there unless the city licenses them to do it. Over and above the fact that there is no parking on that street. I don't see any place, having done a site review on it, and that's why this has arisen, there really is no safe spot left on that street with the dumpsters.
If I might speak to that. The only license, we have never, ever licensed parking spaces on the street. So, the licensing would be just with the dumpsters. If the Traffic and Safety Commission wanted to create two parking spaces on that street with, let's say, two-hour limit or whatever it is, that would be appropriate. But we have never licensed street parking, have we, Tom?
We never have. And if you think about it, once the city council provides a business with a license to any public parking space downtown, how would the council then justify saying no to any other business anywhere in the city?
Bill, then Harold, then Ned?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would assume that what we need, this would be a letter to the people who own these dumpsters, telling them that they're.
No, they'll send you a letter.
So, we don't approach them?
They've already, are aware that they need to send the council a letter.
I'll support the motion because, having heard from people, other than just losing the parking places, which I agree with Counsel Pinalakis on, there are other issues here that parking is needed. And I won't go into them because the people have asked me not to. But there are reasons why we need parking in that particular area. So, I think we have to keep the parking in there. And I think, I would hope that the issue would resolve the traffic and safety. But I would like, I would like to see parking to continue on that, on that street. Thank you, Your Honor.
Harold?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm gonna support the motion as amended to the main motion. And, you know, if you can remember, going back to the first reading on this issue, I asked the city attorney, has the lot lines been identified? And has everybody been notified? As you can see tonight, and as you've heard on the street, and as you've received in your packet letters, certainly, everybody hasn't been notified. And we had eight speakers, and four said, please, table it.
I have to dispute that. We wrote to all the property owners, tenants may not have been notified, but the owners of all the properties were notified in writing. I have copies of the letters.
Well, it's the same issue as Pearl Street. It's a touchy issue. We're all of a sudden bringing something before certain people that say they knew nothing about it. And I'm certainly gonna vote to table this, and it goes back to Traffic and Safety, and do the same thing as they're doing in Pearl Street. They submitted, they created a subcommittee to look into this and report back.
Ned?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just real briefly, I went down and made a special trip around the block today to go down Church Street and look at the situation. And as you can see, actually, in one of the pictures, on the second page of the ones that the city manager provided us, there are indeed markings on the pavement where. where there have been parking spaces somehow delineated. Uh, but for whatever reason, if there's, if there's city parking spaces, they've never been metered. Um, so I-
They thought they were their spaces.
Okay. And in fact, you're right. I think the, uh, if, if you look, uh, the sign on the building that you can see next to the blazer, uh, I believe there's a sign that says something like, it's, it's a, you know, no parking here. It implies that it's a private parking space. And so I think the right matter, um, the, the right course of action is, is the motion. I'm gonna support it to refer it to Traffic and Safety for a thorough investigation and, uh, you know, let's bring it up, uh, the way it should be.
Uh, councillor Saint Laurent?
Uh, yes, thank you, Your Honor. The omnibus program that works under the Traffic and Safety, isn't that a program where they do something for a year and then it comes to the council?
Yes.
Can I ask why this wasn't something that went under the, is there a way of knowing?
Well, I think there was an issue of ownership of, of the property, Tom.
Yeah, they're, they're separate committees with separate functions. The, the parking committee, um, not necessarily spurred on by citizen requests or anything, considers parking downtown and makes temporary adjustments to see if they work, and then recommends those adjustments to the city council. Uh, this was an issue that actually came up as a result of complaints from downtown businesses. The complaint being that the owners of properties along Church Street were, were dominating what was city-owned land and posting as though it was their own private parking. So we had to investigate the matter. We determined about a year ago that in fact, all of Church Street, right to the wall of the building, is owned by the city. We notified the property owners that, uh, you can't post this as though it was your private parking. And if you wanted to keep dumpsters there, you had to get a license. One of the property owners, as I recall, actually got a license from the city council. Uh, the others, I think, have not. Um, and then based upon our determination that it was city land, uh, the Traffic Safety Committee looked at the matter and has proposed the no parking ordinance, which has now brought us here today.
Thank you.
I, yes, councillor Marchand?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, councillor Reynolds mentioned something a second ago. I didn't know whether it was, uh, the lighting or whether it's, it's there. So, is there marking currently, uh, to kind of box off spaces as this is space per car, or is that just a reflection, uh, it's the, uh, the top one on the second page of the two?
Yeah.
I don't really-
As a matter of fact-
I saw today, there-
-that marking that you're pointing to was the specific complaint, or created the specific complaint that I just talked about.
That was not, that was not a city marking.
Right. Someone painted on the city street a yellow square.
That's, okay.
As though it was their private parking space.
Okay. Because it seems to me, and this is obviously something to be part of a comprehensive discussion, that having, uh, markoffs like that, that actually somebody from the city did, uh, which would be a good idea, uh, might alleviate some of these problems by sort of defining it and also defining where the dumpsters would be. You know, it's part of a process. And it also might help with that blocking off of that, that lot if you kind of have a limit there. I don't know. Seems to me like this is something that could be resolved with a little bit of folks just getting around the table and talking about it.
All right. Are we ready now? All right. The amendment was passed. And now we're going to the main motion. Does anyone want to hear it again before you vote? All right. You all sat? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Very good. Okay. Uh, a letter from Carrie Jenkins, acting president of Ostray Landing Neighborhood Association, requesting the completion of the cul-de-sac at the termination point of Dunland Way in Portsmouth Boulevard. Paving of the roadway, the installation of dates and dead-end signs. What you wish, councillors.
Move to refer to the city manager for a report back. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
I have a question. Um, when this project was being done, was this an agreement that the city made during?
Uh, the promises that are referenced in the letter to the city council are not promises that were made by the city or anybody working for the city. They apparently were promises from the private developer who built the homes along that part of the street.
We'll get back a report to you. We're gonna, what we're doing is we're researching the files right now. And I think the-
Yes. Can I, can I just- Uh, we don't, we don't allow it, dear. Just at public hearings, all the public comments.
Well, we'll get, at the next meeting, I hope to have a memo back to you. And then you can come at the comment section, sign up for it, and speak to that. And I'll get you, I'll get you a copy. Are you, um, um, Carrie Jenkins?
Um, Carrie Jenkins is right here.
Carrie Jenkins, okay. Well, I'll get, I'll get Carrie a copy of whatever memo. But I think the city attorney summed it up pretty good. But I'll, we're doing some research now.
Okay, good. Yeah, we've talked to the planning committee also.
Right. So, we'll get, we'll, we'll look at the files and get, and get back to the city council.
Yes. So come early and sign up for the public comment. Okay?
Okay.
Um, you know, we've already voted on it. Yep. All right. A letter from Philip Dirk and Deborah Leaks, the Green Monkey, requesting a license for one vehicle and one waste management dumpster on the backside of Church Street.
Move to refer to the city manager for the licensing of a dumpster. Second?
Discussion.
Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I shouldn't think there'd be any discussion after this. Okay, are you all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. A letter from Barbara Massa, Pro Portsmouth Inc., requesting permission to hold the 16th Annual Children's Day on Sunday, May 7th, 2006.
I'll move to the city manager with power.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And, uh, Stephen, that's something you don't want to miss. Uh, then the next letter is, uh, from Barbara Massa, Pro Portsmouth, requesting permission to hold the 29th Annual Market Square Day on Saturday, June 10th, 2006.
Your Honor?
To the city manager with power.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Uh, a letter from Jim Splain, requesting the city council consider expanding the public comment session and adding a council lis- listen section, session.
Um, Your Honor, I move that we refer this to, uh, the incoming mayor, and, uh, for a report back.
Very good. That sounds good to me.
Second?
All right. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, councillor Whitehouse?
Um, representative Splain, uh, makes some very interesting comments, and, um-
Would you like to read the whole letter?
Um, of course, Your Honor. I was glad you asked. Thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
"To the mayor and honorable city council, first, please let me congratulate each city council member who was re-elected and the two new members who will be joining you. Just as important, congratulations and a thank you to all who ran for any office, whatever the results. To participate in the discussion of ideas and to offer oneself as a candidate for public office is one of the best ways we can all make democracy stronger and our community better. A special thank you to Evelyn Sorrell for her service as mayor. Evelyn, you have done many good things for Portsmouth. Unfortunately, you will be with us to do much more. You have positively affected our future in many ways. The Portsmouth Listen Candidates Night reinvented the way candidates should engage voters in the future. I've participated in Candidates Forum in one way or the other since 1965, and this was the most enjoyable issue-oriented evening I've seen, where voters had a chance to meet the candidates one-to-one, or more like three to eight, in sitting in a circle of eight voters. Voters were thus treated as important as a candidate, which of course, as voters we are, and the dialogue was mutually beneficial. Lots of laughs, smiles, and thoughts. Coordinator John Tabor and Jim Nogus did a fantastic job in the process that night and in their work leading up to it. In 1989, I wrote the city council rule that created the public comment session that starts each of your council meetings. It was worked well for 17 years. Instead of restricting or limiting that part of the city council agenda, as has been attempted in the past, I hope you will find ways to expand it. Involving the public, involving the public year-round, not just around election time, is essential for generating new ideas, keeping government fresh and new, and enchanting democratic ideas. In addition to expanding the public comment session, parts of your process, how about adding a council listen session each month or so, where the Portsmouth Listen process of sit-down, small circles discussion are held for an hour or so on specified issues with the nine members of the city council. It is a great way to hear more voices, ideas, and solutions. Such council listen sessions could well serve meetings of the school board, fire commission, and police commission on a monthly basis as well. Please find ways to continue the dialogue, create ways to expand the discussion, discover ways to involve more people in the process of generating ideas. I would like to add that I was very pleased, as a citizen of Portsmouth, to see positive approaches during the campaign by candidates for the city council, school board, fire commission, and police commission. When one sees a negative campaigns of some towns and cities throughout our region and nationally, is it especially good to see Portsmouth candidates stand tall above those tactics. Hopefully, all candidates in coming years in the organizations of groups that endorse them will continue to speak in positive terms about our future possibilities and opportunities, and not engage in personal contact. Democracy shines best when participants in the process treat one another with respect and appreciation, even when we disagree on issue. Being proud of our city always means being thankful for one another. Sincerely, Jim Splain, former assistant mayor."
Thank you, Harold. Very nice. Uh, okay, we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Now we're down to a letter from Dee Martin, American Lung Association of New Hampshire, requesting permission to hold the 21st Annual Clean Air Challenge Sea Coast Bike Tour on Saturday, May 20th, 2005, and Sunday, May 21, 2005. Ned?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to the city manager with power.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Uh, last letter is a letter from Peter Flores regarding Church Street parking and the dumpster storage.
Your Honor, I move that we refer this to the pa- safety, tra- Traffic and Safety, um, and, um, as, as long as they're gonna be reviewing that, that whole, uh, project.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Your Honor-
Oh, sorry, Harold.
Let me read that last sentence of, uh, Mr. Flores's, uh, uh, memo, would you please, Your Honor?
Go right in there, Harold.
He said, he states, "Lastly, let me just say that I think that the city had a responsibility to notify all the property owners that would be affected by this issue. I am disappointed that I did not have more time to prepare a response. I hope in the future that this will be handled differently. Thank you for your attention. Sincerely, Peter Flores."
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, if I could again, I'm well acquainted with Mr. Flores. He had more than a year to deal with this issue.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Now we're down to the city manager, and John has three items that require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item deals with the trash compactor.
[laughing]
Aren't you lucky, Jack?
Trash man.
Um, the, uh, as you're aware, uh, the license agreement, the extension between the city and owners of the Old Ferry Landing, Poco Diablo's and Stock Pot Restaurants expired on November 30th, 2005. The owners of those establishments are requesting to renew their license for the trash compactor on Siri Street that services their businesses. That's a copy of the original license. Also, we have the amendments. Uh, this would be, again, a one-year license. So we've gone through these one-year licenses so that if there are any issues that come up, we're able to address them at the time of reissuance of that license. At this time, it would be the city staff's recommendation, uh, to authorize us the extension, authorize the manager for the extension of this license. And, uh, Jack Blaylock is here from the Old Ferry Landing. If there are any questions.
Madam Mayor? Uh, I've got a hand up before you, Laura. Uh, Bill?
Aye, thank you, Your Honor.
You want to make the motion and then you can speak to it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I recommend that the city council move to authorize the city manager to extend the license agreement between the city of Portsmouth and Old Ferry Landing, Poco Diablo, and the Stock Pot Limited for the period December 1, 2005 through November 30th, 2006.
So we get a second? Okay. Did you want to speak to it, Bill? Okay. Laura, did you want to speak to it?
No, I just wanted to get it over with. We keep going on and on, dragging here. I'm on a move. Football game tonight.
Be quiet. Be quiet. Is everybody all set for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Uh, the next item, Your Honor, is the, uh, annual meter enforcement, uh, suspension for the holiday season. And I'm recommending, uh, that we forego meter enforcement from Saturday, December 10th through Sunday, December 25th. Uh, we will be having meter bags. I will be putting on those. Uh, and, uh, we will be enforcing 15-minute, two-hour, and four-hour parking limits, uh, by chopping the tires to make sure people aren't turning over those spaces, but they'll be at no charge.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A question for the city manager. When you bag the meters, do they say on them two or four? Or, well, my question is this-
They say it on the pole. Okay. Never mind.
When you put the bags on, John, when you put the bags on, John, is that covered?
Cover the pole, the meter. Doesn't cover, no. There's, there is, there is something on the pole, right, Steve? There is a-
There's something. You, it never used to be. It used to be right on the meter.
Yeah.
When was, when was your meter person in there?
Quite a few years ago. I'm not telling them.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Very good. Does that answer your question, John?
It does, Your Honor.
It answers mine. Uh, Ned?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, uh, I understand the answer to the question. I'm, I'm just wondering if that, um, the city manager, um, based on past years, um, is it still, is it clear to people that even though they don't have to put money in the meter, that the hourly limits still apply? In other words, have you seen, uh, a lot of violations of the timely, of the time limit?
Steve, have we, have we had many last year? No. No. People, turnover. It'd just be unfortunate if people think they're getting a gift, that they come back, you know, they don't understand the terms of the gift, and they come back and they have parked for three hours and they get a ticket anyway. Well, we, we, we haven't had a problem with that. We try to do through public relations, through, through, um, press releases. And it's also important for the businesses to have that opportunity for the turnover.
Absolutely. It's, it's important.
We put this on channel 22.
Sure.
And it makes it nice for the meter person because we all get Christmas gifts. See?
And advise people not to lick their fingers and rub off the chalk or they get coal in their stockings.
Oh, boy. They, they gotta weigh it out there.
Sounds like somebody already knows how to do that.
Are we all ready? Um, are we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. John?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with, um, the 2006 city council schedule. Uh, what we need to do at least, uh, in the meantime, is have a schedule replaced. Uh, schedule obviously can be changed, uh, when the new council, uh, seats in January. But we would like to have, uh, the council schedule in place. This is typical, uh, schedule that you've looked at in the past. Um, and the, there can be additions to meetings, uh, and also to work sessions. But what we did is, in the schedule, we put the, the basic meetings in along with what we would know as the budget work sessions. There are five of those along with the budget hearings, which we know in advance, there's one at the beginning, one at the end of the, uh, process. So this is, uh, your schedule for 2006. And again, it can be amended as the new council deems appropriate.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I move that the city council approve the, uh, 2006 city council schedule.
All right. Do I get a second?
Second.
Speaking on-
All in favor?
Speaking on the issue, Your Honor.
Uh, yes, Harold?
To bring your attention to a couple of things. Uh, June 19th, uh, we should, uh, indicate on the schedule that we will be adopting the budget if, uh, if things go according to plan. June, June 19th.
Well, I wouldn't want to presume what the city council will do on June 19th, but certainly I can put that down.
Well, it's set up by the JBC. The JBC has it on their schedule, the 19th, the budget will be adopted.
Is an estimate.
That's why I bring it up. Another thing, Mr. City Manager, I think you'd appreciate what I'm about to say, but October 2nd is Yom Kippah, a very, very important Jewish holiday. October 2nd.
Yes, you are absolutely correct. Yes, you are absolutely correct. And when we get to that, we can, uh, the new council can adjust that. Thanks for bringing that to my attention, appreciate it.
Uh, we all set on the vote? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the mayor, and, uh, first I have appointments, and I will repeat myself again, uh, stepping down, um, the end of this month. I have not been putting, uh, any new people on boards. I'm leaving that up to our new mayor, but there have been a few that I've had to do because some of the, uh, committees had nobody. So that is why I did it. The first one is consideration for the economic development, and that was Michael Murray. Uh, consideration for reappointment to the Board of Adjustment, Charles A. LeBlanc. Now, you all have the right, you know, to go see Kelly and ask her, uh, if there's any, um, one that you're concerned about as far as, uh, not making the meetings and things like that. Kelly keeps an accurate record. To be voted on, the Board of Library Trustees, Ed DeValley.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. To be voted on, Library Trustee, Amy Berger.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. To be voted on, Board of Library Trustees, Barbara M. Ward.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And right down at the end on the second page of Barbara Ward, you can see Kelly puts, uh, on the new application, she puts the meetings attended and the meetings missed. And we'll go as far as three, but, uh, we, after three, they've got to be spoken to. Right, Bob?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. Uh, to be voted on, Economic Development Commission, Ed R. Hayes.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Economic Development, uh, Cliff M. Taylor.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. To be voted on, Taxi Commission, James J. Feenley.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And James never missed a meeting. He, there were six meetings, and he's never missed one. You've got, you've done a lot, Harold. I give you credit with the Taxi Commission. I remember way back when it used to be one big fight in there. Uh, to be voted on, Taxi Commission, Peter Braziano.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. To be voted on, Taxi Commission, Frank A. Daggett.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Citizens Advisory Committee, to be voted on, Aljean Bailey.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Don't worry, Steve, you're gonna have a lot of them, don't worry. Because you've got a lot that you've gotta fill.
That's right.
Hmm, see what we've got. Okay, we've got two, um, resignations. The first one is, um, I, if it's all right with you, I won't read the whole letter. Would you like to read the letter to somebody?
No.
No, we're all set then. It is Marie S.
Salai.
Salai?
Salai.
Salai, okay, very good. And she is resigning as a trustee of Portsmouth Public Library. So, um, I will make sure she gets a nice letter, and, uh, thank her very much for her services.
So moved to, uh, accept the resignation with regret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. John F. Sullivan, who will be a hard one to, yeah, to, yeah, uh...
Why don't we read that, when you're on?
I'd be happy to read it.
Okay. You wanna read it?
I'd be happy to. I've had the pleasure of serving with John Sullivan for the past two years, and, and it, his letter says as follows, "It is with deep regret, regret that I tender my resignation from the Portsmouth Planning Board effective January thirty, two thousand six. The time has come for me to step down from this great assignment. The board is in good hands by the appointments that you have made over the years, and the alternates are well qualified to step in and fill my position without missing a beat. The entire planning staff are truly an outstanding group of people dedicated to serving the great city of Portsmouth, and they should receive the greatest support possible from our city council. As you know, I have always felt that every citizen should give something back to our city and to make it the best city to live in as possible. On January thirty, two thousand six, I'll be completing thirty-five years of community service, which includes twenty years on the Planning Board of Education, fifteen years on the Port- I'm sorry, on the Portsmouth Board of Education, and fifteen years with the Planning Board. I have also served on many boards, committees, and study groups too numerous to mention. I will always be available to assist the city in any way possible, and I hope the mayor and the city manager will call upon me if I can be of any assistance. Both Martha, Martha and I have enjoyed and cherished the many friends and associates during our period of public service, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. I thank you very sincerely, very truly yours, John F. Sullivan." And I would just also add that, you know, as Planning Board member, he would come up with things that none of us could think of, such as, he would remember in whose estate a property was held so that a, uh, an obscure landowner could be notified, and, and besides those kinds of things, he brought a lot to it, and it was a pleasure serving with him.
John goes way back. He's a wonderful man.
And moved to accept with regret.
Okay, all in favor?
Your honor, just a minute.
Yes, Harold.
I'd like to comment. Um, you can see where I obtained some of my knowledge. I served with John Sullivan on the Board of Education for sixteen years. We sat close to each other, we conversed, and we thought a lot alike. Uh, that's in the middle of nineteen seventies to the middle nineteen eighties, and, uh, certainly, uh, he was very, uh, very knowledgeable, and he's certainly gonna be missed on the Planning Board.
I agree. All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, and I'll make sure he gets a nice letter, too. Uh, now there's just, uh, one last thing for me, uh, is a report. Now, I was very neglectful on this, but on the meeting on December nineteenth, I plan to bring forward an ordinance. Hopefully, you'll all agree for me to bring it forward. Uh, it's on regarding campaign contributions only. I'm not asking for a spending cap or anything like that. I went through that years ago, and, uh, but this is strictly, uh, a report on each counselor's campaign contributions. Because I will tell you, my phone rings off the hook, and you can't blame the people because they're a little afraid, you know? There's a lot of money in these war chests, there's no question about it, and, uh, we've, we should want to disclose, definitely. They're not interested in how much money you've spent on your campaign. That, that isn't interested theirs, but it's disclosure. So I will be bringing that forward after I get with Bob on the nineteenth. This is something I've worked at for many, many years, but I've never got anything passed. And, um, I spoke with counselor, a, a former counselor, uh, Jim Splain today, and he was calling from Cogged, from whose office, uh, Laura?
Uh, Bill Gardner.
Bill Gardner's. So they're, they're all looking into these things and feel it's time that this was brought out. So, as I say, that's what I'm gonna be doing, and I'll share it with you people, and if you wanna come up and talk to me, please do. Uh, that takes care of the mayor. Uh, now we're down to Counselor Hines. Oh, I'm not gonna forget you tonight, John.
Well, thank you, your honor. Uh, I move that we accept and place on file the minutes of the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting of November tenth, two thousand and five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
I move that we accept and place on file the minutes of the Parking Committee held November tenth, two thousand and five.
Second.
I, I only note that among the items on that action sheet for the November tenth meeting, item four, uh, has to do with no parking, um, it's not the exact same place, but it's, it's around the corner, um, no parking on the northerly side of Court from Pleasant to Church. I, I wonder if we might ask the, um, Parking Committee to, uh, consider that item, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, item that was referred to it just earlier this evening with parking, um, on Church Street. Consider it, um, in the whole, in terms of, uh, parking, parking on the block.
Parking Committee, uh, you talking about item four on parking, or item four on parking Traffic and Safety?
Um, sorry, I, I'm, I'm referring to item four on, uh, Traffic and Safety Action Sheet, November tenth.
Those have all been passed yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we all set? Yes. Uh, you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and no? Hold on a minute, Laura?
I'm in favor, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
I just wanted, under Ms. Lani.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed. Uh, right, is, does anyone have any miscellaneous, you see that little ankle?
Yes, I do.
Uh, unfinished business, Harold and Laura?
Uh, to Laura first.
Okay, he bows to you.
I, I would like to bring up the issue of the lighting of the tree. Uh, is that under the city, or is that done by a separate organization? Because I had numerous complaints about the fact that the middle school band has always played at the lighting of the tree, and this year, the kids were disappointed because a bagpipe was there, and people that listened to it said it was very solemn and not a Christmas atmosphere. Nothing against the bagpipes, but I was just kinda disturbed that if something that's been going on for numerous years, that the city, um, middle street, middle school band has been playing at, would be changed, and I would like to know in whose, who takes care of this, and do we have anything to do with it?
Uh, it's Barbara Massa, who is in complete charge of, uh, the children, and, uh, both her and I had tried and corresponded with the person that complained, but you don't get a letter one day, and the function takes place that night.
You know, I'm, I'm talking about who puts a tree up in the city?
The city puts a tree up.
City, okay.
When I, I speak to that, the city puts a tree up, the city puts the lights up. We have asked, and they've consented, the Pro Portsmouth has worked to put up the decorations. This is volunteer on their part. They put together the Snowflake Festival, which is part of Pro Portsmouth, and they're the ones that organized the Snowflake Festival. Um, now, I can call Barbara and ask her why the middle school wasn't asked to be at this.
I already know, John, I just said. I got the letter from the gentleman that day, and then I called Barbara, and she had just gotten a phone call from him, and I mean, you have to...
I don't understand what you mean. You said they refused?
You have to put these people, Laura, I mean, you know...
You're saying that they refused, the school, middle school refused?
No, I'm saying, he called and said, why weren't the children invited? They always had been.
Right.
And I said, well, I, I don't know, but I said, I'll call Barbara. And I called Barbara, and she said, well, I didn't know it was a set schedule every year for those children, and she said, that's why we put the bagpipes in, but it was too late to call them to be there that night. We would've done that.
Yeah.
But it was too late.
But I just would like, if the city council has anything to do with it at all, which I sometimes wonder whether it's Pro Portsmouth that runs the city or who runs it, but I would just like to say that we make sure that these young people are at the lighting of the tree and not older people.
Well, your honor, um, if I can speak to that, I, certainly with the new council, before the tree lighting next year, you can determine if you wanna run it, and we can do that. We can run the whole thing if you want. It's a matter of getting the staff available to do that. And Pro Portsmouth, I don't disagree with them. I think probably the middle school, if it's traditionally been the middle school, then they should've been asked, but obviously, somebody, uh, didn't, didn't follow through from, uh, Pro Portsmouth, which, again, uh, we can take control of it, but we, but, uh, that is something that we've been lucky to have in the chamber and Pro Portsmouth working with us. They do a number of things, and, next, I'll call Barbara tomorrow, and she's a very, very conscientious person.
Well, I'm, I'm not complaining about volunteers or anything else, but I think it's a sad state of affairs when a family has children coming up, two or three kids in the family, and they each play to light the Christmas tree, and then all of a sudden, this kid's the last time out for him, or any other, could be anybody's kids, and they don't do it. And I don't think a bagpipe is what you should have at a, um, lighting of the Christmas tree. It should be a festive, and I don't mean to knock any volunteers you have or anything else, but I just think that these things should be sat down and, and thought about before we go and do something that hurts young people's feelings.
Well, we worked with the Portsmouth School System on the Clipper Band. I received five letters from my head of the band. First, he wanted to be on the front, then he wanted to be on the back, then he wanted to be on the front, so finally, I told him, I said, where do you wanna be? He said, I wanna be back by Santa Claus, and that's where we put him. But, I mean, you must remember, Laura, there's an awful lot of work that goes into these things, and I know, because I'm there. And I think, uh, as far as, uh, uh, Friday night and the lighting of the tree was wonderful, we had a lot of kids there, uh, Steve was there, of course, I wasn't drunk coming up to see him, uh, but anyways, uh...
Where was I? Just wanna be clear.
I mean, it's a lot of work, Laura, and we've got to give these people credit for taking it over.
I'm not knocking anybody, I'm just saying it's a sad state of affairs that they have a bagpipe in place of kids playing at it, and that it shouldn't be. I think it's been a tradition for the middle school, uh, children to, the middle school band to do that, and I think with someone new coming in, we assumed that they would know that, but, and you should never assume anything.
Your honor, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll send the letter to Barbara tomorrow and indicate that in the future, if they do the Christmas lighting, that we should include the middle school band, and I'll send a copy to the city councils. Is that okay, council?
That's fine with me.
Sure.
Now, I just would like to ex- explain something. I'm not here to criticize the volunteers or anything, but I am here to represent the people, and there was a lot of people that were disturbed about it, a whole lot of people, and I wouldn't have brought it up otherwise.
Well, they had a wonderful, uh, barber shop quartet, which was marvelous. I, I thought it was nice. The whole thing was nice. I'm sorry about the children, but if they had gotten with us beforehand, we would've known, but, I mean, you can't do everything and not know what you're doing, and Barbara's new, but I think she's doing a heck of a job, and I have to give the woman credit, I truly do. That's the end of what I could say. Somebody want to adjourn?
Oh, your honor, one, one, I, your honor, um, your honor, can we get an update, uh, I like to have an update, particularly on the new library construction. There seems to be a slowdown, there seems to be nothing being done. Um, where do we stand? So for next meeting, can we, uh...
John will answer that right now, we know where we stand.
Well, we, we expect that steel will be, uh, starting on December twelfth. Uh, the reason that steel, we had consciously made a decision, uh, to, um, to hold off, we had a extremely good price for the steel, if we held up, we would've had to pay a lot more money if, uh, we would've gone earlier. This fits into the schedule, and we have, uh, certainly, a, um, a lot better price on this, is, excuse me, councilors there?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't know if you had a question. I was just trying to finish, uh, my comment, but, um, that... But, um, that, uh, that the December twelfth should be the start of the steel to be erected, and, uh, certainly with the new council, uh, I think December nineteenth is gonna be a pretty hectic meeting, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, it's gonna be a late meeting. I can bring, if the council wants me to, I can bring, uh, uh, the Library Building Committee in on, on the nineteenth, and, uh-
No, I don't think that's necessary.
But I think probably in January-
Do you know, just, this is unfair, off the top of your head, when the next meeting of the Library Building Committee might be, so that interested councilors could-
If the council is aware, the councilors typically get updates on that.
I attend every one of them.
Right.
Yes, it's been over a month since the last meeting.
I can get the council-
Well, we, I'm on that committee, and, uh, we won't be meeting this month because there really isn't anything, um, but this is all part of the, of the construction management process, and by, by doing it this way, it allows the construction, construction companies to make adjustments as we go along to get the best prices for the city. So by delaying the, um, build, the, the use of the steel to a time when the, uh, company was free to do it, it was too much to the advantage of the city, so, um, I think once the steel goes up to its-
Also, people are asking about the electrical service, uh, going all the way from Rogers Street Underground, all the way down to the entrance of the new library, construction site.
They were doing a lot of stuff now that they would've had to do later, so they were using the time as best they could while they were waiting.
That library ever gonna be a dead issue?
Better not be. Uh, Steve?
I, I know it, I know it.
Let me just finish, let me just, to make sure that Councilor Whitehouse is, is all set, that we are restarting the site on December twelfth, and in, and we will basically, uh, provide you with, uh, the information I, as I have in the past, when the building committee will be meeting, I will provide you with an updated report, and I will talk to them today, I mean, tomorrow, and, uh, get an updated report to the city council. Okay? Does that answer your question, councilor?
Yes, you know, uh, electrical, three-phase, all the way from Rogers Underground, conduit into the service area, is very, very expensive. Who's footing the bill on that? I don't know. Is it public service, or is it city, or, or is it, comes under the seven million nine-hundred-thousand-dollar bond issue? That's all. People are asking, and I, I can't, I don't have the answers.
Well, we're doing quite well on donations. We've worked our heart out, I mean, Foley and I. We have raised a hundred thousand dollars, and that was what I wanted to raise before I stepped out. But I'm gonna tell you right now, Councilor Whitehouse, I will be here if anything happens to that library, and I will be screaming. I'll tell you where the sea- steel is, it's right downtown, across from the old Newberry's. Norville Iron Works, they paid the big bucks, while we had to sit back and save money. Um, Steve?
Unless anybody else has a comment about, something radically different, and, uh, very positive. Um, a resident of-
Right.
A resident of our community, and a friend of mine, Laurie McCray, uh, played a role in helping assure that the new high school will have an electronic door, maybe that's not the right term, to help with, uh, disability access and that sort of thing, something that I think was an honest oversight, but was quickly addressed in a very positive, proactive fashion, and a few folks like Laurie played a role in making sure that was highlighted and, uh, and addressed. Uh, in a related item, uh, there's a, um, a publication, uh, from the disability community, uh, they, I think it's published four times a year, called The Rap Sheet, and her son, Michael, uh, is part of, and I actually included this in your, in your packets, um, there's a, a project called the New Hampshire Theater Project, and he's just achieved, uh, some pretty good recognition within that, uh, playing roles in some upcoming performances, I think that may have just occurred, or will be soon occurring this year.